All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us back. I'm sorry we're a few minutes late coming back from our recess. But let me begin with calling on our vice chair to find out. Vice Chair Gould, I had raised the concern about whether or not you felt that being able to chair the meeting by phone, if I need to excuse myself, was an effective tool. Let me hear from you first, and then we'll decide whether we need a temporary vice chair for this meeting.
Great, thank you Chair. I was asking John Pomerini if he was controlling all of the speaker cues. That would have been my only hesitation, but he's also checking to see if it is possible for me to legally remotely chair. I'm not concerned if there's only one person monitoring the speaker cues, but if you're using the electronic system, and it would be impossible.
Okay.
Madam Chair, thank you. Under the executive order that we just came out of with respect to remote meetings, that would be less of a concern, but we are out of that remote order. So it's my opinion that the chair has to be somebody who's physically present in the chamber in order to do it.
Okay, so let me ask, again, I want to expedite this, but nominations from the floor? I'm sorry, Member Castredal?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I nominate Member Colbert.
Okay, we have one nomination for Member Colbert. We have a second. Do we have any other nominations?
Second.
I'm sorry, Dr. Gordon, second, thank you. All right, we have a nomination by Member Castredal, seconded by Vice Chair, I mean, sorry, by Dr. Gordon, and for Member Colbert. Member Colbert, do you accept the nomination?
It would be my honor, Chair.
All members in favor of, I'm sorry, Member Colbert, please say aye. Oh, I have to do roll call. Have to do roll call. Member Gallo?
Aye.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Byrd?
Aye.
Member Castredal?
Aye.
Member Gordon?
Madam Chair, for the record, you know I like to follow the record. I did hear my name as second for Member Colbert, is that true?
Yes, ma'am.
I would consider it an honor to nominate her to take the position to chair the rest of this meeting. So let the record reflect that, that I did not give that in the very beginning, and I am giving a second to that nomination, and I'm also agreeing for her to sit and chair since she's in the chamber.
Okay, to be clear, this is serving in the role of vice chair for today.
Right, alrighty.
Okay, thank you.
Right, but if you're leaving the chair?
Absolutely.
She would have to be, are you leaving the chair?
No, ma'am, but in the event that I would need to excuse myself for personal hygiene reasons, I did want to make sure we had a chair at the table.
Okay, very good. Well, you have my second on that for the record, because I don't think they got a voice on that. My phone was on mute, and then I highly recommend that. Thank you.
Thank you, yes, and I did hear your second, so that is what the record reflects. And I think our last roll call vote then is, Member Colbert?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Okay, and I likewise vote in affirmative.
I think he makes me chair, that's also an aye.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you, you're right, I skipped over you. I actually don't have my roll call vote here, so I was just kind of looking around the room. I apologize. Let's, and thank you, Member Colbert, for accepting that responsibility. Let's move on then. Dr. Jenkins, back on track.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So we are now at Slide 5, talking about guidance for reopening healthy learning environments. It's been mentioned more than once, we've been asked to be flexible. The plan that we believe we can pull together from our discussion today cannot be a final plan, because by requirement, it also has to be reviewed and flexible as well. But our time here, the discussion that we have, will certainly give us some direction on how we might move forward. The board on July 14th will actually need to approve our plan and anything that we might need to send forward to the state for approval. So let's walk through significant agenda. We will stop periodically, Madam Chair, members of the board, for comments and questions. And actually, when General Counsel is making his, Associate General Counsel is making his presentation, I will have his phone. You don't need to change anything. I will be keeping the tally on the speakers. So Slide 6, guidance for reopening healthy learning environments. As we all learned yesterday, the reopening guidelines were shifted yesterday under the Commissioner's emergency order, which is actually titled Further Guidance for Closing Achievement Gaps and Creating Safe Spaces for Learning. More on that in a moment. Still in place are some of the expectations from previous direction that we received, including that we create local safe schools plans to maintain in-person learning, create a framework for local planning, and establish supports and partnerships in the community for making those local decisions. Health departments, medical experts, our own district incident management team have all been engaged, and as well as other community partners, providing us information. Next slide, district. Previous guidelines also included that we had to implement CDC and FLDOE guidelines where possible, had to have input. Employees need to be provided PPE, that is Personal Protective Equipment. We needed enhanced sanitation requirements, and of course, the plan needs to be fluid. And our plan also has to allow for post-deployment modifications. Ever-changing is what we have to be prepared for. There should at least be a quarterly review and broad communication strategies. And so many have wondered why we've not made a decision and posted it earlier. A few districts have. We are not the last to have discussions or come to final decision. But in this instance, it has been helpful to gather more research, more information, and certainly to get this additional input from the state regarding what is required and expected of us. So next slide, let's talk specifically about those quote-unquote "further" guidelines. So what came out yesterday essentially said districts will offer face-to-face brick-and-mortar education to our students in August, five days a week. In fact, the language says at least five days a week. And so there is no plan that is considered at this point that should provide less than five days a week opportunities for students and families in the brick-and-mortar schools in August. It also says we need a full panoply of services, in other words, complete collection of whatever we've provided previously needs to be provided as we reopen. There has to be progress monitoring throughout, and there needs to be students with disability and English language learner provisions. That last bullet is critical as well, because there's an expectation that you have equitable school flexibility, meaning what you're trying to offer in one school, you offer in other schools as well. Additional guidelines. Districts and charter schools that wish to consider innovative alternatives to supporting their students and families, unique learning styles, need to submit a plan. So the district is expected to gather plans from their charter schools to submit. We do not have to wait for our charter schools to actually gather their plans. We may submit our plan when and if we are prepared to do so. The plan is considered temporary for the fall of 2020. After the first semester, the state of emergency may be lessened, and there may be an expectation that the plans adjust. But at least for the first semester is where these plans fall currently. And also, if a district does not wish to consider innovative alternatives and open as usual, they do not need to submit a plan. What that means in essence is there are two choices already pre-approved, we'll go into it in more detail shortly, two plans that are already pre-approved, your face-to-face operations and your full-time virtual selection. That operation, which would be Orange County Virtual School here in OCPS. Those two, if those were your only provisions for parents and teachers to be assigned to or to select, there is no need for a submission. If you want another possibility that is not among those two, then you have to submit a plan. And we believe we have an innovative plan that should easily meet the requirements of the state and provide additional opportunities both for our parents and students as well as for our children. We'll talk more about that in a moment. Prior to that, I've asked our Associate General Counsel, John Pomerini, to review information. Again, our board is very aware of statutory requirements and roles. This is for the general public, some folks who have asked questions. We'd like to make sure everyone's on the same page around what the statutes say regarding guidelines and what our various roles are. And let me say upfront, while there are clear guidance in most statutes, my preference is that the board and I always partner around decisions, because we have to help make them successful for our entire community. I also have to say, we are always interested in discussions with our union. We need to collaborate on behalf of our children. But when people ask questions and there's a lack of clarity, we do need to at least have everyone understand, be on that same page around roles. But rest assured, we have a commitment, I mentioned previously, not only do I have a commitment to work jointly with the board in these leadership decisions, but I've already spoken with our teacher union president on more than one occasion, and certainly committed as much as is possible within this order, certainly committed to working with our union as well. Our last, our utmost commitment is to the safety and well-being of our employees, of our children, of our community, and we are still committed to providing high-quality education for our children as well. I wish there were simpler answers that made everyone happy. I think the board's issue here has been simplified because of what transpired yesterday. But rest assured, we are still committed to engaging and engaging all of our stakeholders and supporting our children. With that, Mr. Pomerini.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Madam Chair, thank you, Madam Superintendent. I'm going to go over some of the statutory guidelines and constitutional guidelines that we all have to follow, school boards. Again, you all know these rules, but this is a reminder for not only you all, but the general public, what some of those guidelines are. First, the basis of our government, of course, is the Constitution, so there's a couple constitutional provisions in play here. Article 9, Section 4B, this is the very familiar provision of the Constitution, which says school boards operate, control, and supervise all free public schools within the school district. The other is Article 1, Section 6, that is the constitutional right to bargain, and it says the right of employees by and through a labor organization to bargain collectively shall not be denied or abridged. So constitutionally, we set up the right for public employees as well as private employees to bargain in the state of Florida. That provision is actually sort of unusual. You don't see that in very many state constitutions, but it's in ours, and it's been there since 1968. One other provision, because yesterday things did change, that I just wanted to mention, Article 9, Section 2 of the Constitution creates the Office of Commissioner of Education. And there is actually a statute that deals with the Commissioner of Education and his authority. It's 1,001.10, excuse me, yeah, 1,001.10 subsection 8, and it actually talks about the Commissioner's power in emergency situations. It says, "In the event of an emergency situation, the Commissioner may coordinate through the most appropriate means of communication with local school districts, Florida College System, et cetera, et cetera, to assess the needs for resources and assistance to enable each school institution or satellite office the ability to reopen as soon as possible after considering the health, safety, and welfare of students and clients." So there's the statutory basis for the emergency order that was issued yesterday by the Commissioner of Education. Next slide, please. And now to the statutory powers, one more, please. You all are very familiar with the statutory powers of the school district, but there are certain ones that I want to just place reminders of, especially in light of the decisions this board's going to have to make in the next week. The first one is 1,0142-4F. That is the August 10th provision. So this provision very clearly states that, it says that the school board shall adopt policies for opening and closing schools and fix uniform dates. However, the opening date for schools in the district may not be earlier than August 10th of each year. Of course, given the language, that is not a requirement that you shall start on August 10th. It just says you can't start earlier than August 10th. Of course, we also have the Commissioner's emergency order yesterday that says that schools will be open by August. So I think the outer limit of that would obviously be August 31st, which is the last Monday of the month. But it doesn't say you have to open August 10th, but the Commissioner's order, which we have to follow, says a start date of August. Next slide, please. This provision of the statute is the health, safety, and welfare provision of the statute. This is typically called in the law, the police powers, but that basically means that the school district and the school board has the, to make sure to pay proper attention to the health, safety, and other matters relating to the welfare of students. So that is something that always has to drive your decision-making, because obviously, before children are educated, they have to be healthy, safe, and you have to provide for their welfare. So that's usually job one, and that's called police powers, and that is something that you all are definitely responsible for as a board. Next slide, please. 1,0142, this is the 180-day provision in the law, which you all are well aware of. It says that the school board shall provide for the operation of all public schools, both elementary and secondary, for a term of 180 days. And then it goes on to define that in the rules, or the hourly equivalent. So you can do 180 days or the hourly equivalent. The rule is cited 6A-1.045111, just because they want to make that number as long as possible. And so it says for kindergarten through third grade, you have to have 720 net instructional hours. For fourth through 12th grade, that's 900 net instructional hours. So this is a provision that is at issue in the governor's emergency order. There is an indication that there could be a waiver of that, however, what it also says in the governor's, or, I'm sorry, I'm saying the governor, I don't mean to, I meant to say the commissioner, I apologize. What it does say in the Commissioner's order, it says, I'm talking about the submission of reopening plans, and it says, "The submission of reopening plans and subsequent approval of those plans does not constitute a waiver of state statutes regarding instructional days and hours. Rather, approval demonstrates how districts or schools adhere to those statutes and rules." So that's what the emergency order says. It says in one instance that you can waive those, and in another instance, it says when you submit a reopening plan, you're going to demonstrate how you comply with that. So we will be getting clarification from DOE further on the scope of this, and so we will obviously be discussing that once we get said clarifications. Next slide, please. 1,0142-15, this one is very important, and it's something you all know. There are some times when folks will come to me and say, "Well, wait, can't you just ignore the law?" And the answer is no. School boards shall require that all laws and all rules of the State Board of Education or of the district school board are properly enforced. So you have to ensure that all laws are enforced, all State Board of Education rules are enforced, and your own policies are enforced. And then 1,0142-23, this is actual, an actual duty of school districts. It requires that you all provide virtual education through a virtual instruction program, and that includes, obviously, the state Florida Virtual School or other approved providers. As you all have heard, we have Orange County Virtual School as, within our system where we provide virtual education. And then following. And then we have, obviously, the powers of the school board, and then the statute set up the powers of the superintendent. It says the superintendent exercises general oversight over the district school system in order to determine the problems, needs, and recommend improvements. So this is basically the provision that says the superintendent is the day-to-day operational head of the school district, and there are various other statutes that talk about it. So the next provision is the general powers of the district school superintendent. It says that the superintendent, from time to time, prepare, organize by subject, and submit, excuse me, hold on. I apologize. Prepare, organize, and submit to the district school board for adoption such minimum standards relating to the operation of any phase of the district school system, as are needed to supplement those adopted by the State Board of Education, and as well will contribute to the efficient operations of any aspect of education in the district, and ensure that the minimum standards adopted by the district school board and state board are observed. So again, the superintendent has to make sure she's following the requirements laid out by state statute. The superintendent would also have to follow the requirements as laid out by the emergency order issued by the Commissioner. So this provision of the law would require that. Next slide, please. The superintendent has to recommend the establishment, organization, and operation of such schools, classes, and services that are needed to provide adequate educational opportunities for all children in the district. Again, she's going to come to you a plan with how we're going to do face-to-face, how we're going to implement our innovative learning model, and how we're going to do virtual. That's something you will hear going forward. The legislature also, with respect to the superintendent, wanted to ensure that the superintendent requires that all laws and rules of the State Board of Education, as well as supplementary rules of the district school board, are properly observed. So again, not only does the school board have to follow all laws and State Board rules, superintendent has to do that as well. Next slide. And then with respect to personnel, these are just the general personnel policies, but they lay out that the district school superintendent is responsible for directing the work of the personnel subject to the requirements of Chapter 1012. And the superintendent, again, shall direct or arrange for the proper direction and improvement under the rules of the district school board of the work of all members of the instructional staff and other employees of the district school system. So that is the superintendent as day-to-day head with respect to directing employees. So that's with respect to the powers of the superintendent, those are the things that I wanted to highlight. And now collective bargaining, onto the next slide. Thank you. There are certain things that are management rights under the statutes as laid out. There is a right to, in the Constitution, for collective bargaining, but certain things are so fundamental to the operation of the school system that the management's given a right to do those unilaterally. So the statute said, "Is the right of the public employer to determine unilaterally the purpose of each of its constituents' agencies, set standards of service to be offered to the public, and to exercise control and discretion over its organization and operations." Yes, ma'am?
I'm sorry, I think that the visual aid is helpful for anybody who's following this, who's like me and does better reading. And I think that this presentation is extremely important. Yes, the board knows it, but I think many members of the public and our employees probably are not as familiar with the distinct roles of the superintendent, the responsibilities to the state, et cetera. So very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, so we are now back up. And so this statute basically talks about the very basic functioning of the organization. So in this context, it, you know, like I said, the emergency order took away a lot of the, mystery's not the right word, but a lot of the discretion here with respect to how we were going to teach. But the decision on whether or not it was going to be face-to-face instruction versus virtual instruction versus the innovative learning measures, those are things that are a management function. Those do not have to be subject to collective bargaining, because that is setting the standards of service to be offered to the public. That is so fundamental to how this organization operates, that that's not subject to collective bargaining under the statutes. Next slide. What is subject to collective bargaining under the statutes? So what happens is, is if once a labor organization, and in this case, of course, we have two, we have the Orange County Classroom Teachers Association and the R.J. Orange Education Support Professionals Association. Both of those have been certified by PERC for a long, long time, decades. And what happens is, once they get certified, then the bargaining agent for the organization and the chief executive officer of the appropriate public employer shall bargain collectively in the determination of wages, hours, and terms and conditions of employment of the public employees within the bargaining unit. So what that means is, chief executive officer of the agency is superintendent in this case. The statute does say that the superintendent shall consult with members of the legislative body of the governing board, but it is ultimately the superintendent's responsibility, either through herself or a designated bargaining agent. In this case, Jim Proiser, Senior Executive Director of HR, who's been designated as the chief negotiator, to actually sit down and have those negotiations with our two labor organizations. And what do they collectively bargain? Wages is exactly what you think it is, how much somebody gets paid. Hours is exactly what you think it is, it's how many hours a person works during a shift, or how many hours they work during a week. And other terms and conditions of employment, that is something that is a little bit less defined in Florida laws. As a matter of fact, there's no definition of what other terms and conditions of employment are. That is decided by PERC on a case-by-case basis when matters are brought up to PERC for a decision. So there are certain things, you know, supplements for our teachers are certainly things that are bargainable. Leave policies are certainly things that are bargainable, those are terms and conditions. But this is really a case-by-case discussion as to what terms and conditions of employment are. Next slide. I'm going to breeze through some of this case law, because like I said, some of this case law became less relevant after yesterday. But I did want to point out what a managerial, or what a management right is under the statute. And this is a case, City of Miami versus FOP Miami Lodge 2020. This is a case out of the Third District Court of Appeals in Miami. It was affirmed by the Florida Supreme Court. And the court says, "Look, if it's a particular subject is found to be a critical managerial decision which fundamentally impacts upon the functioning of the enterprise, then it is not a term and condition of employment and does not need to be mandatorily bargained." So what that means is, we do not have to have this bargaining to the point of reaching agreement or going to impasse over a critical managerial decision. We may have to impact bargain, and I'll explain that in a minute, but we don't have to bargain to impasse before we implement what's a management right. So, next slide, please. There are different quotes that come from this case, and I'm not going to belabor them, but what the bottom, the bottom bullet is what is really at issue here. What happens is, the court set up a balancing test to determine whether the management prerogative or the terms and conditions of employment predominate. So if they think it's something so fundamental to the operation of the organization, they'll balance it towards the managerial right, and they'll allow an employer to engage in that without having to bargain that all the way to impasse. Next slide. So what is impact bargaining? Basically, it is, we implement a management right. So in this case, we're going to implement an innovative learning strategy. That is something we would get to do. The unions would then have the right to come back and bargain over the impacts of that. They could be looking at things like, okay, I'll give you an example of an impact. Who's going to be assigned to work in that innovative learning model? That would be something we would have to impact bargain with them. But the managerial right to set up that innovative learning model in the first place is something we can do without having to bargain that to impasse with them. This school district of Indian River County versus Public Employee Relations Commission case, this was a case where the school district switched from paper and pencil lesson plans to digital lesson plan. And what the court said is, look, you have to have impact bargaining. You have the management right to say, you're going to go from paper and pencil lesson plans to computer lesson plans, but you have to impact bargain. And you have to impact bargain things like, does every teacher have access to a computer? If you're going to expect them to engage in computerized lesson planning, they should have access to a computer. That's what an example of impact bargaining is. Next slide. All right, so when you impact bargain over these issues that affect wages, hours, and terms and conditions, what you have to do is, you have to give the unions that you're bargaining with notice that you're going to implement a management right, and then you have to give them an opportunity to bargain over the impact of the decision before you actually implement it. So for example, this board is going to, you know, finalize its plan July 14th. At that point, we would have to notify our bargaining units, both CTA and OAS, but to say, okay, this is what the board has decided with respect to how the back-to-school is going to operate. And then we would have to... And then we would have to set up impact bargaining sessions with both unions to impact bargain over the effects on wages, hours, and terms and conditions. Now, the unions will be responsible for identifying those impact and those areas that they want to impact bargain. That's what the law does require. But then we will have to engage in a period of impact bargaining before we finally implement the decision and go ahead and start having instruction. So it's going to be not the longest period of time, but it also depends on when we end up opening school. If we open school later than August 10th, then we'll have a little bit more time to impact bargain. If we open August 10th, then it's going to be that period between July 14th and August 10th that we have to engage in impact bargaining. But this very last bullet down here is the most important one. It says, "Look, however, in satisfying this bargaining obligation, an employer need only provide notice and a reasonable opportunity to bargain before implementing its decision. This opportunity does not require the employer to submit to an impasse in negotiations to the statutory resolution process prior to implementation." So we may be engaged in impact bargaining well into the school year. I hope we are able to reach agreements prior to that, but we may have to engage in impact bargaining into the school year, but that doesn't prevent us from opening school, and that doesn't prevent us from implementing those critical managerial rights as to, you know, what kind of instruction we're going to be providing when we come into the new year. I believe that is the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Paul Marini. Two things as well. I mentioned Wendy Dormel, CTA. I've spoken with her a couple of times. Certainly, the emergency order by the commissioner had significant impact on our teaching force, but I don't want to discount Ron Pollard and OESPA. Both union presidents were invited to have representatives on our work groups for our think tank where they were compiling ideas. And so I want to certainly acknowledge Ron Pollard as well. I mentioned President Wendy Dormel specifically because of what happened with the executive order yesterday. We had some conversations. Let me say something briefly about the, let me say something briefly about the sources of reference, and then we can pause again before or pause after Mr. Howard just gives a quick review of the input that we have received at the board's pleasure. So on slide 28, those are all of our sources. I won't read through them for you. I will tell you that yesterday at 3:00 PM, we had a webinar with the State Department of Education to walk through some of the details in the emergency order. And today at 3:00 PM, there was another webinar, so we have staff listening in to that one as well. And in some instances, questions needed to be researched so that they could bring answers. We were told yesterday there would actually be a checklist or a matrix that they would use for evaluating individual school districts' applications for innovative solutions for their learning. Next slide actually just summarizes that Florida had a theory of action, that we presume that reopening of schools can be done safely, that we have a moral purpose for closing achievement gaps, meaning we know significant underservice happens with our lower-performing students, and that Florida can only hit its economic stride if schools are open. That is actually in the document, and that we also should ensure the safety and take a step-by-step approach. I recall I've had this conversation with individual board members that we were supposed to be using a dimmer switch approach, and that seemed to change significantly yesterday. Then they also listed in the past indicators of success. We thought those were still worth sharing because they've not been rescinded under the new order. They want to keep the education family safe and healthy, instill confidence, have student-centered outcomes, elevate educators and equip them for success, enable our parents to return to the workforce, increase economic mobility and agility, and show compassion and grace. Madam Chair, we can pause or briefly go over those survey outcomes. What's your pleasure?
I have, I think two of us have questions related to Mr. Paul Marini's presentation, so if we can take those.
Give your phone back.
Mr. Pomerini, my question was on slide 27, the last bullet, dealing with the fact that we can implement a management decision, but if we are required to bargain the impact, we don't have to come to an impasse. So the way I understand that is, if we aren't able to reach an agreement with our unions prior to the start date, we would still move forward with whatever plan that the board adopts and continue to negotiate the impacts. The part I'm not clear about is, after we've negotiated the impacts, are the effects of that retroactive? And do some of those have budgetary implications or logistical implications that would require us to reverse possibly assignments of teachers based on how those impacts were negotiated or affect the budget? Either one of those. I'm just trying to understand if it's retroactive. Does that question make sense to you?
It does make sense to me, and I'm going to give the "it depends" answer, which all lawyers always give in those situations, and I apologize for that. But it depends on what the parties end up negotiating with respect to whatever the impacts are. Like, we've seen with the various memoranda of understanding that we've done with both our bargaining organizations, that things like the provision of PPE is certainly something that we have bargained over with respect to that. Some of this, other things could be bargaining over assignments. And, you know, at that point, we would obviously like to have that done sooner rather than later because disruption to a learning environment, if you have a teacher who teaches, let's say you come in a month into the school year, and you have a teacher who's teaching a class, and all of a sudden, under any impact bargaining that we reach, we could have a situation where they could, you know, transfer to another school. That would be very disruptive to the learning environment. That would be something that we would attempt to avoid, and that would be something that would be part of our negotiations with the unions to say, "Look, we are now in the midst of a school year. This would be disruptive to a learning environment." So to the extent we can get it done earlier, that's always better. Could it have effects? Possibly. Would our bargaining teams try to avoid those effects to the greatest extent possible? Yes. Because once you get into a school year, and let's say we have to make expenditures, and let's say we impact bargain beyond a budgetary process, we may have to amend budgets if the agreements would call for that. I'm not saying that that's what we would do, but it just depends on when we reach the agreements. And, you know, we would try to minimize impacts on budgets and to student achievement in the classroom to the greatest extent necessary.
Okay, thank you. Member Gallo and then Dr. Gordon. Member Gallo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just, I have a few questions. The hours of operation, I know that it says in statutes that what we're required to have, 720 and then 900, depending on the grade. Is the Orange County Florida, or Orange County Virtual School required to the same statutes? And is Florida Virtual School required to adhere to those same standards or statute, that statute?
I am pretty sure the answer to that question is yes, with respect to Orange County Virtual. And I would suspect it would be the same for Florida Virtual, but they also have individual statutes that deal just with Florida Virtual. Like, Florida Virtual has its own statute that deals with it, so I would have to look at that just to make sure. I don't want to give you a sure firm answer of, yes, I think they have to comply with the same number of hours because they have their own statutory requirements. I know, and I know with respect to our teachers that teach at Orange County Virtual, they're covered by a contract with us. They have the same work hours. They have to have availability of students, you know, at least one night a week. So they're interacting with students on a regular basis, and they are having to instruct hours that are consistent with that statute, to my understanding.
Okay, the reason I ask is I know that, well, with Florida Virtual, which may have, like, as you mentioned, have different rules or statutes than Orange County Virtual School. I know that children are allowed to work at their own pace, and I know in the instance when my children took the required online course, they could take as little time or as much time as they wanted. Like, it could take anywhere from three or four weeks or three months, and I was getting a call from the teacher saying, "Your child needs to turn in work." So I was just curious if they were subjected to the same statutes and if, because we're going to be relying on Orange County Virtual School, if we would have flexibility in the laws for our virtual school, if we could maybe, I don't know, attach our wagon to their statute since we'll be operating virtually, like, what our options will be and how flexible we'll be allowed to be?
The only thing with flexibility is with the laws, as of course, as I've said, you all have to follow them. So to the extent we don't get waivers on various statutory provisions, we're going to have to follow them. So flexibility is only basically to the extent that it's been granted in this executive order. Otherwise, whatever the statutory provisions are, we're going to have to follow it.
Okay. But that's something that we could ask for. We could ask, talk to the Department of Education if we needed more flexibility in our virtual school, and that's something I'm sure we'll be looking at?
I would suspect so, but again, they were, as Dr. Jenkins said, they're going to be coming out with a checklist of things like for the innovative learning model, that they're going to expect for us to meet various facets. It's going to be, you know, same curriculum if I remember correctly. It's either going to be synchronous meeting, it's going to be live, or asynchronous, it's going to be recorded. But it's going to be, like, you're progressing through, if it's live, you're going to be progressing through a school day like you're going to school at the actual facility. So you will see a lesson on English Language Arts for 90 minutes, then you'd have a break, then, you know, recess or a special, and then you go to your math lesson. So it's going to look like a regular school day.
Thank you. And then I do have another question, but Chair, if I can request, there was a webinar today at 3:00 with the Florida Department of Education where, as John mentioned, they're laying out the terms of the order. Can we get that PowerPoint? I'd like to request that the board get copied on the PowerPoint as soon as it's available from the department.
Yes, thank you.
And then I have one more.
Please, one.
And then earlier, you talked about the delegation of authority for the board as the bargaining agency, and you made reference to the legislative body?
Yeah.
Could you explain that to me, please?
Sorry, that is, the legislative body, a short answer is, you all as the school board. And where that usually comes into play is when we have an impasse proceeding. So what happens is, is we have impasse, and then all of a sudden, you know, either party will object to the special magistrate report, and then you all will be sitting as what's known as the legislative body, where you decide, you know, what you're going to do with respect to the impasse. That's when it's typically used. They also use legislative body in the statute with respect to collective bargaining, where you negotiate wages, hours, and other terms and conditions. And it says you have to reflect the will of the governing board of the legislative body. I don't know why they wrote the statute that way, because normally, when you refer legislative body, it's only at the end of the impasse process. Legislative body is you all as the governing board.
Okay, because it says in that statute, and I'm just trying to make sure I understand it correctly. "In conducting negotiations with the bargaining agent, the chief executive officer or his or her representative shall consult with and attempt to represent the views of the legislative body of the public employer." Since we've now determined that we are the legislative body, I'm curious on the MOUs, especially the MOUs that we've been signed. They've been negotiated by the district, and we've been informed of them, but after they've been signed, and usually like right before the public finds out about the MOU. So do MOUs fall outside that statute?
Memoranda of Understanding is something that's created by our contract. There's an actual provision in our contract that says if we have to clarify terms within the contract during the term of it, you know, or if we need to make a minor change, although I'm a little worried about making minor changes while I send and get to the ratification. I think that brings up a whole other host of problems. But they are created in order to clarify what existing contract language is, and that's usually done by the superintendent and her bargaining team in conjunction with the unions and their bargaining teams, and they come up with these memoranda of Understanding. They agree to it. Under the law, we don't have to submit Memoranda of Understanding for ratification to either the bargaining unit, and we don't have to submit it for ratification to the school board itself. That is only when we have tentative agreements and we're reaching a contractual arrangement that we bring it back to the board for ratification and bring it to the bargaining unit for ratification. Memoranda of Understanding a little bit different. It's just clarification of contractual terms.
And I appreciate that, and I appreciate your explanation of that, because I don't think that teachers and most are aware of how MOUs work, and I think the board could attest, I'm sure they're getting the same emails that I am. So thank you for that explanation.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Next, we have Dr. Gordon, and then we have Madam Kester-Dennel. Dr. Gordon, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. My question relates to number 25.
Twenty-five, did you say? I'm sorry.
Yes, the slide 25. If you could go back to that.
Yes, ma'am, we are here.
Okay, on the three dots, those three bullets?
Yes, ma'am.
Where you stated, okay, that, thank you so much for all of the explanation. This was really needed, and I'm very grateful. Where the court further tells, okay, we acknowledge that certain decisions must be retained exclusively by management, that there are those management decisions which are so fundamental to the basic direction of a corporate enterprise are those which impinge so indirectly upon employment security as to require their exclusion from the area of mandatory bargaining. I know you didn't get an opportunity to really go into that, but I was going to ask you on that, you could either do one or the other, just explain it the way I thought that I would remember the way this was written, are when and where and when is this used, and can these management decisions be collaboratively, you know where I'm going, worked out? Because I've been in a spot where we've got a little bit of both.
Dr. Gordon, with respect to, I guess, the last point first, could a management decision be collaboratively worked out? You could work out collaboratively a management decision, but that would be giving away authority that is reserved exclusively for the school district or for any government entity under that statute, under that management rights statute. As somebody who's a labor lawyer and has been doing it for a while, I always recommend that clients not bargain away the decisions that they could make as a management right because that erodes the role that this board was elected to perform, which was to set standards of service for the public. And if you have to negotiate for standards of service to be set for the levels of service for the public, you could be impeded in doing that going forward if you had to negotiate that all the way through. In fact, the cases talk about, look, you know, they talked about a police force who said, you know, unless you give us the 6% raise, we're not going to perform our duties. We're going to call out. That would impede public service. So the court said, "Look, those are the types of management decisions, management decisions about where you deploy and how you operate your business, that has to be a management function so you can serve the public." So I would always warn against collaboratively solving management decisions when ultimately that decision rests within this governing body, this legislative body, and this school board. With respect to the bullets that were on the slides, again, those were fundamental decisions of the districts. Management decisions which are so fundamental to the basic direction of the corporate enterprise, and those which impinge so indirectly upon employment security as to exclude, require their exclusion from the area of mandatory bargaining. For example, again, and I think this is the easiest context in which to do it, are we going to have exclusively face-to-face? Are we going to have exclusively virtual? Are we going to have innovative learning solution? Are we going to have, excuse me, a combination of all three? Those are so fundamental to how we teach our students that that shouldn't be premised on our ability to do any of those based upon an agreement with a bargaining unit. We have to be able to tell the public, we are going to offer one of these three sets, or one of these three methods by which these students are to be taught. And that is something that you all have the management right under the statute to make those decisions. I hope I answered.
Yes, yes, you went well. Excellent, excellent. And then just give me a little bit on the middle bullet, when, just explain that one to me, because the one that I have some concern about in the law, I've seen it work both ways, okay? I've seen it work, all right? Where there just had to be, what did I put, for the good of the order? of the order. That's what I wrote down here, there had to be some good of the order when you're in the bargaining. The biggest thing is coming out to the board and saying, this is what we agreed on. Just kind of explain that second bullet, and then just highlight a little bit of your knowledge on the compulsory collective bargaining section on this rule that came out for us today, that you brought to us.
Okay. So this second bullet is, you know, a decision may affect job security. So what that basically says is, at some point, you all have a decision to make, and I hope we never get here, but there may be a circumstance where we say, you know, we just don't have enough students, we're going to have to let some employees go because we don't have enough students for all of our teachers to teach. That is a fundamental management decision. You're going to say, listen.
Okay, right, but I gotta stop you there, because this is very important. Several calls that I have received lately, and I heard you say, we hope this never happens, but when we build schools, and we switch them over to a K, I mean, it could be a K5, but we move it to a K8, or we say, we have to get rid of 60 teachers, okay? Okay? So think about it, you might say, you hope it never gets to that, but I've actually had calls, and not only that, I've even had calls where administrators were taken away from schools, and were not, even though they're in the management side, they're not under the teacher collective bargaining side. So keep in mind, I'm talking teachers and their job security. I know administrators, administrators is another one, where these administrators are moved, and we lose them to charter schools, and I hate that, and these are great administrators, where they may have had a high A, a high B, and they were not reassigned, and I guess, for whatever reason. My concern in this one is, and you say, we hope we never get there, but we have, I've seen where we've had to cut, and everybody did not get placed, and where they, they were told, well, we got to get rid of so many teachers. And you, and look, when I came up, it used to be the last one fired, the last one hired the first fired, okay? So when you're explaining this, see how you can include that into your analyzing of this bullet.
Okay, so there, as Dr. Gordon, I know you well know this, but there are various types of teachers and various types of contracts that we have. We have probationary contracts, which are for people in their first year. We have annual contracts, which are people after their first year, and then there are professional service contract teachers. Of course, professional service contracts were eliminated in Senate Bill 736 in 2011, but for every teacher who had a professional service contract, as of July 1, 2011, they have, they continue to have that right. So for professional service, yeah, so for professional service contract teachers, if we have cuts at a, at a school, we are going to have to, to place them at another school. We just have no other choice. Because of their contract type, they get reappointed from year to year, as long as they have effective performance, or as long as they don't have unsatisfactory performance, excuse me, and as long as they've not engaged in any misconduct that would justify their termination, those folks would have to be placed. To the extent we're, you know, like we are relieving a school, you know, and opening up a relief school, our contract has in it provisions that say, we give considerations to those teachers who are, who are at the school that's being relieved, or that, and at the new school that's opening up as relief. We don't guarantee their hiring, but we give them consideration. Not everybody gets placed, but I can tell you, you know, our HR folks do a yeoman's job trying to point people to opportunities that exist within our system. We always have vacancies during the summer. We, people, if people apply, they end up getting jobs, but there's no guarantee that an annual, and the law's very clear on this, it's actually a case called Gabriel versus Manatee County, where it says, a teacher has no expectation of reemployment if they have an annual contract. Now, I could tell you, as it works just generally here, most of our annual contract teachers get reemployed every year, because we have need in the system, we have vacancies, they, you know, they find jobs. But they're not guaranteed jobs as annual contract teachers under the statutes. We do give them opportunities to go out and apply during certain windows earlier in the, in the reappointment process, so that's all in our contract as well. We don't have a, a, most teachers do get reemployed, I guess is the simplest way to say it. Professional service contract teachers, we have to find jobs for. Annual contract teachers, we don't have to find them jobs, but most of them get jobs.
Excellent, excellent. And then the last three words, the compulsory collective bargaining.
So what that means is, like, especially in this, in this case, where we're making a decision that we have to make cuts at a certain school. That is not, the decision itself to make cuts at a certain school is not subject to compulsory collective bargaining. We get to say to them, to them being the union, hey, we are making cuts at cer, at this certain school, and we're losing 30 positions, and I'm just making up a number there.
Well, no, I'm giving you a real one, it was 60, but the staff handled it, I, you know, the staff handled it. In one instance, that really was rough, it was 60, we really had to move 60, okay?
So.
Not in my district, not in my district.
In that case, we do not have to bargain the fact that we are cutting 60 teachers. That is fundamentally a management right, and it is a level of service that the district gets to provide. So, but the union has impact negotiated that over the years. When I talked about the various provisions in the reappointment timeline, where teachers who are cut get to maybe put in an interview for jobs before other people do, that is something that the union has impact bargained. But the ultimate decision itself to make those cuts at the school is not something that we have to bargain.
Excellent. I thank you, well done. And the reason why, I don't know how many other board members are getting calls about that, but I mean, people are calling back when they were relieved at the very beginning of the year, you know, and I'm going, wait a minute, what's happening here? And then I immediately called the superintendent, and then she puts them with the staff member, but I, I don't know why people, well, just like people, when people do things to people, that's not very good. And they hole it in, but it doesn't, you know, it doesn't make the district look good, because people are going to say, well, I don't want to go there, because I do remember Dr. Bridget Williams, then, Dr. Jenkins saying that we are hiring, the word was out, that we weren't hiring anybody. And then when we went online, we were hiring teachers, but there was a freeze on the paraprofessional. But I think you bringing in this, these court orders, and these collective bargaining procedures and sections from the Florida statute, this is very helpful, and teachers, and paraprofessional as well, that they really need to read this before they sign any contract. Because once you understand your contract, and you went through the probationary, oh, they just let me go, and you're versus a professional service contract employee that's been there and was not cut out, totally wiped out, but in so many ways you are eventually, because they limit your time of how you, long you could teach, and then they limit when you could come back. So I, I want to say, well done on this, and I really want to commend you as one of our general council staff members, to help us get this understanding, because the collective bargaining process is so important, because people fail to understand, and I need, one more question I need you to answer. What is a right-to-work state? As we differ from the state that some of these teachers have come from.
Dr. Gordon, a right-to-work state means that an employee has the right to work in the state and choose to join a labor organization, or to not choose to join a labor organization. There used to be, in various other places around the country, states where you were forced to pay dues to a labor organization for their representational activities. The United States Supreme Court for public employees in a case called Janus, I think it was last year, ruled that the compulsory requirement to provide money to a labor organization for representational activities violated the employee's First Amendment right to freedom of association and freedom of speech. So we don't have what is known as closed shops, where everybody has to pay dues to a labor organization anymore in the country. In Florida, as of 1968, that was impermissible. Right-to-work just means you can join a labor organization, or you can't, you don't have to join a labor organization.
And then with that in mind, I will close with this. With that being, however, share with the public that the labor organization is the bargaining unit and the voice for that employer, whether they want them to be or not.
That's correct. The, the labor organization negotiates for all teachers, or all members of the bargaining unit, regardless of whether or not those employees have joined the labor organization or not.
Well done. You said it. They vote, they talk for all. So I'm a member, a very proud member of the NEA and the AFT, and I'm also a board member, and I know what's important. All children comes first, to me, and have always come first. And the rest of us, we are important, but it's very important that we look out for the children.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have some questions that relate to what Member Gallo was speaking about earlier, dealing with the Florida Virtual School and the Orange County Virtual School. I've had so many questions from parents and from teachers, asking what is the difference between those two? I don't know if you're going to be going into that. Okay, you will.
Dr. Jenkins.
Dr. Castor-Dennel, we will be going into that. If you could hold off just a little bit, but there, there are some distinct differences. And I actually have the answer to the question that was posed earlier from Greg. No, 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 the answer came from Greg. So when it comes to virtual school, they are not held to the seat hours, because they only get paid for course completion.
Right.
So virtual, so I knew it would come back to him as soon as I said it. So they get paid for course completion. They are not held to seat minutes or hours. They only get funding based on the course completion. And we'll get, go more into the difference in a, in a little bit. Dr. Castor-Dennel.
All right, thank you. So there, that does affect the funding, because they, they get, there's a, it's like a lag, lagged funding, whereas our 180 days in our regular schedule is, we're, we get the funding for that upfront, or as it goes. I would like to reiterate that we advocate, whether it's Mr. Howitt with a legislator, or Commissioner Corcoran, or with our superintendent, for some of that flexibility in the equival, the hourly equivalents to those 180 days, since the virtual schools also have that flexibility. You can't, even though it's about course completion, I don't think you can have it both ways, saying that you get credit in this one area for English, and you get that flexibility, whereas in a traditional school setting, you still get the same credit, yet you don't have that flexibility. So I would hope that we could advocate for some flexibility in how those hours look. Is it, is it just teacher instructional hours? Is it student work hours? How, how much flexibility can we have around how those are defined? Another concern I have is, the, when teachers are assigned, or they choose to go to one of the, the options that we offer them in this, as far as our schedules, if they go to the Orange County Virtual School, will that be considered a break in service? If they go to the Florida Virtual School, would that be considered a break in service? And if it is, I would hope that when we're explaining their options, that we make that very clear, because to get a break in service for a continuing contract teacher is, it's kind of an end of the road for, for many of them, and that's, that's unfortunate. So I would hope that we make sure that they are well-informed of the consequences of those choices.
Dr. Yes.
Yes.
I can answer that question. Orange County Virtual School would not be a break in service, it's within our system, so that would be the same as if they transferred from Wolf Lake Elementary to Zellwood Elementary. Number one, number, but going to Florida Virtual School, that is completely different. So that would be leaving one public employer, OCPS, going to another public employer, Florida Virtual School. So the, if they had a professional service contract in that case, yes. If they left a district school and went to Florida Virtual School, they would lose their professional service contract.
And then they would become an annual contract after that.
Probationary first, then annual, yes.
So they lose a lot of protections.
Yeah, under a probationary contract, you can be fired without cause. With an annual contract, you can only be fired with cause during the term of the annual contract, but then they don't have to renew you at the end of the year, so yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Member Castor-Dennel. Dr. Gordon? Uh, Dr. Jenkins, I'll call on you first, you have your hand up, and then I'll go to Dr. Gordon, yes?
Yeah, I just wanted you to know, we have a technical difficulty, so Dr. Gordon dropped from the call as well as Member Gould, and she has not been able to get back on, just wanted to make you aware of that.
Okay. So Dr. Gordon is queued up right now, but what I understand you to say is that we have lost connection with both of our board members that are calling remotely. You'll let me know when we have connection, we'll go back to them.
Yeah, Dr. Gordon is on the line now, I believe.
She is, okay. Dr. Gordon, are you on the line?
Oh, she has no sound, and there's no connection with either of them. And, and Member Gould was not trying to get in queue, she just said, something's dropping my call, and I can't get back in.
Okay. So will you all please let me know as soon as we have Dr. Gordon fully integrated, so we can call on her? I just have one follow-up question.
I'm back.
Oh, Dr. Gordon?
Has joined the meeting.
Dr. Gordon, are you with us?
Yes, but I don't know what was said while I was away. I don't know what happened, I was disconnected.
That's what I understand. Apparently, there was a technical problem that disconnected both you and the vice chair, the two callers in. We are right now finishing up the discussion on the bargaining process and the implications of that. Do you have a follow-up question on that, Dr. Gordon?
No, I'll, I'll come back. John did an excellent job, and, and I know, I know how much we care about school.
Has joined the meeting.
Good, she's made it back to, good. Okay, go ahead, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I did have one follow-up question, and the, the issue, and it may not, this may not be the appropriate time to bring it up, Dr. Jenkins, let me know if there's a better time. I did receive one email from a, a teacher, who wanted to know if for medical reasons, if they, given the options that the governor's put forth, if they needed to take a sabbatical, would there be a kind of emergency policy that we could put in place to allow our teachers who, for this year, felt that they needed to not work, where they wouldn't lose their, their status? Is that a question that we can answer at this time? Or is that, okay, thank you.
Yeah, under our collective bargaining agreement, under the board's policies, if, for example, I'll take, they have an underlying health condition that's considered high risk under the CDC guidelines, that would be qualified for medical leave, and under our contract, they would get up to one year's worth of medical leave. Now, it, they would exhaust their paid sick leave first, and then they would have to go on leave without pay, but they would be entitled to that. There's also a provision in the contract that talks about personal leave, which says it may be granted, it's not, the medical leave shall, it says it shall be granted, but personally, it says it may be granted, and that's a case-by-case determination as well. But there, but for people who are in the high-risk category, you know, and if they need to take leave, there is provisions under our collective bargaining agreement and policies to do so.
Thank you. I have one other question, I need some clarification in terms of process, either from you, Mr. Paul Marini, or from the superintendent. So we are not taking action today, but Member Castor-Dennel has raised a couple of things that she would like to see. that she would like to see us advocate for in terms of flexibility in how those hours are, are used or counted. And I think, I, I want to know whether that's something we bring back next week so that we all have time to digest that. I'm pretty sure we're all going to be on the same page, but I also don't want to start a precedent here of raising suggestions and asking for consensus. For instance, my thoughts about having a little greater latitude for teachers who needed to take this year off has been addressed through the contract, but if it wasn't, that might be something that the board would want to consider. So, Dr. Jenkins, how do we proceed with the suggestions that come from board members as we move forward?
So because we are building the bicycle as we ride it, whatever we approve next week is not the end of the discussion. There will be opportunities for more input. If it comes to a policy level where this board can put in place a policy around leave, there is no sabbatical leave currently. We'd certainly have to research that in the statutes as well. And so there may be issues that the board wants to deal with through policy. If it comes down to applying to the state, my recommendation is that by next week, we at least have those potentially three models that we send forward, so we have that flexibility for our teachers to try to get a rapid approval from the state, so we can then have our parents start making their selections and start trying to get our teachers' place. Additional requests for waivers or leniency, we can still move forward as well. It does not have to be a part of our actual innovative plan, because I think it would hold it up. But I will tell you, the state finance officers put in a request around making sure we get paid the same amount of money than the, rather than the differential for virtual students, even if we did our own virtual school, and are still waiting for an answer. And so my recommendation to this board is if I hear some consistencies that we can at least get our application in to rapidly be able to give parents and teachers some choices, that we still have separate entities or separate, I'm sorry, separate communications through our legislative arm to ask for some additional leniency, so we're not held up by that.
So what I, what I hear you saying is our primary goal next week is to reach a conclusion here, so that we can start to give some degree of certainty to our teachers, our parents, our students.
Correct.
Recognizing that the innovative approach has to be approved by the state, but the sooner we start that, the sooner we get an answer. Second part is any requests that we think are legislative or DOE-type of requests, that as we gather those conversations today, that we would do that through a separate process. It would not be as, as primary a function, an urgent a function, but an important function. And so precedent for next week is get this decision made. And secondary to that would be ideas that come up here today, we won't vote on, but we will come back and reconsider those, and if we have recommendations, then we'll go forward with those.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Paul Marini? We have a number more speakers. So let's see, Vice Chair Gould, and then back to Dr. Gordon. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Chair. My question's actually a follow-up to yours about the sabbatical. What if the teacher is the primary caregiver to someone who would be at risk at home? Does Family Leave Act kick in then, or how does that currently work or would work under these circumstances?
Mr. Paul Marini?
So the Family Medical Leave Act is, is a 12-week entitlement to leave, and it does allow you to care for folks who have a serious health condition. So that would be something that would run through our Family Medical Leave Act office. We have a, an office here that deals with that. They receive applications. They get the certification from the healthcare provider that the family member has that illness, and then they would be entitled up to 12 weeks under that act. Then...
Hang on for a second, Mr. Paul Marini. So in this case, we don't want somebody with severe asthma to get COVID, right?
Yes.
So if they wanted to be able to stay home to protect a child or whoever they have to protect, but not themselves, because that's different, how would that get addressed? And under what current rules, or do we need to start shaping a policy for the superintendent around that?
I think under the current rules in that circumstances, what we're talking about in our school board, the contract and in our policies is the illness of the employee, him or herself, not necessarily somebody who's ill that is in the, in the employee's family. The Family Medical Leave Act is the federal statute that deals with that, if, if you have to take leave to care for somebody who has a, underlying health condition. But again, the guarantee in that is 12 weeks, as opposed to, in our policies, which is up to one year. So you would probably have to, if it was the board's pleasure, you would probably have to start coming up with procedures for that if you wanted to grant leave longer than the 12 weeks, so they could care for somebody outside of their family. So...
Okay, thank you. That got me to the answer we needed.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Dr. Gordon, you recognized?
Yes, I had, okay. Can you hear me?
We sure can.
Okay. Um, looking for my notes. Okay, I did hear that you stated that, I love those statements that you made on, you know, getting everything together, requesting the ideas, making the recommendations and everything. For, for my purpose here, I, I do know that there's some things that we can discuss, and I know that there's some things that need to go through the bargaining team. We have three bargaining teams. We have the, the OCPS bargaining team that represents the board. We have OFSA that represents your power professionals, and then you have CPA that represents your instructional unit of teachers. So in order, it's a lot for us to cover within the short period of time. I just felt that two days would have been better than just the, the one half a day. But the, the main thing is that everybody has something to say, and everybody's concerned. But if we can get information over to the agencies and with, and I know ours is a superintendent, but we, we hand to the superintendent, I think we all have been handling, handing lots of stuff to her, and even sending things to the staff that deals with that and their department. I know I've gotten things from other counties and said, look what, look what they're doing here. And I think we were even sending some things from my county, but we already put ours, the county that I work in, we had already put that out, and they did it. We had it on Facebook and everything, so that parents and everybody could look at that. And I was, and I was pleased about that, that that happened there. We have so many things that we don't want to miss, things coming from every, you know, others, everybody that could be beneficial, but we know where to send it. We know all bargaining items, but some people may not know what's negotiable. They, they may not know. You know, that the bargaining team for us, Dr. Jenkins' team that she selected, the OCPS bargaining team speak on our behalf. They really don't know that. Some people don't know that. And then that the OFSA, she, she spoke with the chair this morning, I mean, OFSA, who has been doing a very good job in handling that, and then she also mentioned that she spoke with Mrs. Darmel, the president of CPA. So, Madam Chair, I, you, you said it, so I, I just need clarification on those three bullets that you pretty much mentioned, and we're getting, and requesting our ideas and getting the goal done today, because we didn't get an opportunity to do that. Is this the direction in which you want to go at this particular time, since the time is far and well spent, and we haven't gotten to summer school yet? And I have parents waiting on line. I told you, I'm out here with the 4,000 plus, and I'm getting questions about the summer school and what's happening, you know? The, the people are concerned about their children too. So I, I don't know if summer school may, should have maybe been first on the agenda, but I had nothing to do with it. We only get input, board members get input into the agenda, but I know you and the superintendent puts the agenda together. But I, but I do have parents that are concerned about the students, the disabled students that are out there. And I know that school is starting on Monday, and we all have received many questions from those parents. So I like what you said when you listed those three or four items that you were thinking about as you related to the goals, the ideas, requests, and recommendations. So can you give, let us know what direction you would like to go in? Because as I stated, summer school hasn't even been discussed, and it's going to start Monday, and I do need to answer some of these questions that's coming in about the students with disability.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Gordon. Very, very briefly, all I wanted to do is make sure and confirm with Dr. Jenkins that, that we weren't going to be asking the board to vote on anything that gets brought up today. And so I know Dr. Jenkins is keeping a list of anything that board members bring up that might be discussions that we need to have subsequent to next week. So that was the purpose, for just making sure that I wasn't glossing over anything that any board member raised as something that we might want to get consensus on. Secondly, in terms of, just for clarification for the board, superintendent and I do work together on what's going to be on the agenda. We actually don't work together on the presentations. So the order of this presentation is, is the superintendent and her cabinet's decision for each of the presentations. And, and I appreciate what your input, that you have parents that are on the line, and they are ready to get to the things that are more important to them. And I think we are just about there. So, Dr. Jenkins, back to you for the survey results.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will briefly go over those May survey outcomes. They are somewhat dated now, but we wanted to make sure folks understood the length and depth of input we have been gathering. I want to ask, and I, and I like to remind folks as well, it's not voting, it's not by popular choice that any decisions were to be made, but it was still interesting and informative to gather that information in May. So, Mr. Howard, our chief communications officer, will review that briefly and then lead you into those working groups who, again, were not looking at voting or surveying at that point, but simply consolidating all of the ideas coming from our community. Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. In an effort to gather information for the 2020-2021 school year, the district conducted a parent-employee survey in May to gauge preferences among three scenarios of return. Return to school with safety measures in place, continued distance learning, blended return of the two. The survey was actually announced prior to the end of school. We had announced that VR Connect Orange messaging, it went out to all of our families, including in, in multiple languages. It was a four-day survey, and it was a phone survey. So we ran the survey over a four-day period, beginning on May 19th, and it concluded on May 22nd. The, as you can see, the results of the survey that are before you, the parent preferences in the Parent Guardian Survey was, it was, there was no clear majority vote in the outcome. It was a plurality. Thirty-seven percent chose option one, which was return to school with safety measures in place. The, these, these results were prior, obviously, to the recent surge in cases in Orange County. And we do know it is a bit dated, as, as Dr. Jenkins stated, but, but this information, there was a total of 88,349 responses. Next slide. The employee preferences, similar. There was no clear majority among the employees. About 33%, the plurality was towards returning to school with safety measures. And again, this was before the recent surge. This happened during May, not in June. But it gives us, it gave us some idea of where our employees and our parents fell when it came to return to school and looking towards the next year. That was about 20,000 responses out of our 25,000 employees responded on that. On June 1st, we posted online on OCPS, the reopening Think Tank, on the district site and on school sites. We promoted that on social media. The intent of, of the Think Tank was to gather ideas from our stakeholders as to what their thoughts were around the return to school. This was an effort to bring those ideas together from parents, students, employees, and the community. We promoted this through Connect Orange text messaging, as well as emails. We also posted them on district and school sites during that week, during that first week. We had thousands share their ideas to, about the return to school. There was about 4,000, well, exactly 4,145 ideas were submitted and shared with our four working groups. Those four work groups are, were in the areas of academics and instruction, workforce, health and safety, and district operations, which was made up of administrators, teachers, union members, and staff. The work groups took the summaries, took the information, and consolidated them into summaries, which were posted online, along with an additional 6,087 total ideas and sentiments. That is, that can be found through the link on the front page at ocpss.net. In addition to the website, we promoted Think Tank submissions all throughout the month on our various platforms, as well as Facebook and Twitter. Where, I will turn it over to, to Rob Bixler, who's the Associate Superintendent for Curriculum and Digital Learning, to, and he's the, also the lead of the Academic and Learning Work Group. The work group leads will go through their summaries and give you some of the details of the, their summaries as far as the Think Tank. So, thank you, Madam Chair. Superintendent Jenkins?
Let me also stress for anyone listening, these are posted on our website, on our homepage, and you can actually go to a link to look at thousands of entries where people submitted their ideas and thoughts. So you can see both the summary and the thousands. Mr. Bixler?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Rob Bixler, Associate Superintendent for Curriculum and Digital Learning. I was the lead for the Academics and Instruction Subcommittee Working Group. The subcommittee, who were amazing, are, those members are listed on the work group summaries, which are posted on the OCPS website, under the Think Tank summaries link. Our committee met to gather ideas on potential instructional models. These ideas, along with input from survey results, which is the digital Think Tank, formulate the overall summary for traditional, which is the face-to-face model. Instruction, for traditional face-to-face instruction, a consistent theme involved the safety of students and staff. The need for social distancing expectations, masks, temperature checks, in-campus or classroom cleaning schedules was shared by many of the subcommittee members and from the survey results. Our CTE representative reminded us that some considerations need to be given for those unique CTE courses that require face-to-face instruction. In some classes, up to half of the course must be done in person to meet the clinical components of the course. Lastly, the need for professional development and training on safety procedures was highlighted often. Suggestions included training of all employees and included training of students on best practices to stay safe. Next slide, please. The discussion and sharing on virtual instruction focused on who virtual instruction, and at the time, it was distance learning, worked best for and around consistent expectations. Several members shared that, that extended virtual instruction appeared to work better for secondary students because they were more independent, but seemed a little harder for elementary students who required more support. So as decisions are made on virtual instruction, who it worked best for and who needs more face-to-face support may need to be taken into consideration. Feedback also included the need for consistent instructional expectations, like taking attendance, turning in assignments, and daily schedules. One subcommittee member shared that in speaking with students, even they wanted more structure and daily routines. The need for social emotional support for students, teachers, and parents was also mentioned during the discussion. mentioned during the discussion. Support around SEL is needed regardless of any final option chosen. Finally, any decision the subcommittee members and survey results mentioned, considerations need to be weighed as to how this will impact the daily schedule of parents and teachers due to job commitments.
I'm the Fire Marshal for Orange County Public Schools and the Lead of the Health and Safety subgroup. Our cross-functional subgroup correlated and evaluated COVID-19-related health and safety issues as it pertained to district operations. The majority of our subgroup's work focused on face-to-face model, as it has the most health and safety factors associated with it. Blended and virtual models of delivery are lesser variations of the same theme, so there's no truly, really, excuse me, no truly unique concerns for them from the subgroup's perspective. Subgroup members reviewed all health and safety-related Think Tank ideas, and we combined them with the group's discussions before forwarding them for your consideration. As part of our process, we researched federal, state, and local recommendations for social distancing, personal hygiene, personal protection equipment, building entry health screening, and facility disinfection. In addition, we worked to separate evidence-based information from the well-intentioned but often inaccurate conjecture that was widely present. In the social distancing aspect of our work, we discussed ways that classrooms could be safely occupied, including seating density considerations, and the possible use of personal protection equipment, specifically mask and face-covering ideas. Within that, ESC student needs stood out as an area where additional protocols, training, and equipment would be important. Beyond the classroom, additional considerations included how best to handle the movement of students within, in between buildings, their use of cafeterias and auditoriums, and the need to properly manage their arrival and departure from campus. Overall, ideas include physical barriers, directive signage, floor markings, which include lane designations for one-way hallways, and the use of designated in and outdoors, among others. The goal of these are to limit close proximity interpersonal contact to minimize the potential spread of infection. Next slide. Student-staff personal hygiene considerations went beyond the use of hand sanitizer products, as we focused on how the most effective means of cleaning hands is the use of soap and water, and noted that education and directives should reinforce this, as well as the need not to touch one's face. Disinfection considerations include that what type and how much classroom and office space disinfection was needed, include what could be properly cleaned, as not all objects can be. The frequency of cleaning that was possible with the current resources and what would be needed for future was also discussed. Specific plans for disinfection of classroom equipment and manipulatives, playgrounds, and athletic facilities was also needed, will be also needed. Extracurricular activities, including athletics, fine arts, clubs, along with events that are open to the public and facility use agreement activities, must all be managed differently for social distancing and disinfection needs, and both must be included in their event plans. In addition, volunteers, contractors, vendors, would need to be supervised in a manner that supports the district policies and directives in the post-COVID-19 landscape. The building entry screen evaluation identified the limitations of currently available resources and the requirements for screening of large volumes of students, staff, and visitors daily. As the virus can be transmitted asymptomatic, the effectiveness of thermometer checks in preventing infected people from entering a campus is limited, but when coupled with the district's policies and directive signage, it is a visible reinforcement of the entire comprehensive approach. Next slide. Assuming that there would be students and staff that would arrive with or develop infections symptoms while at a school, the need for treatment and isolation protocols was identified, which has an impact on staff training and increases physical staff, physical space requirements for these operations. Student-staff mental health was an important area of concern that was raised, and as it is expected, that both groups will see an increased need of assistance. Restrictions on campus visitors, alternative eating areas, and doing away with perfect attendance awards were also suggestions that were brought forward. Most importantly, it was clear that the education on infection intervention, illness recognition, and the district policies for those areas will need to be, will be needed for students, staff, and parents, so that they understand what work is being done to keep facilities safe, and what their respective roles are within those initiatives. As found within the workgroup itself, collaboration will be the key for success, and all of the efforts, and together, we'll be able to keep OCPS safe. I conclude.
Let me, before we take, no, you're fine. Before we take the next presentation, let me ask, I think we have three people on the line, and we are getting some strange interference coming through, and it's coming through on our channel as well. So I'm just going to ask for everybody to make sure that their phones are on mute. Thank you. Welcome.
I'm Mike Winter. I'm Senior Director with Facilities Maintenance, and I was the lead for the Operations Work Group, which consisted of 16 other OCPS staff members that are all listed on the workgroup summaries referenced by Mr. Bixler. We summarized our review into five categories. Our first category being a school schedule. Input included a traditional reopening with nightly cleaning and frequent hand washing, the delay of school start to day after Labor Day or later, change school year from February through November to avoid the major part of flu season, and other alternative school schedules, including implementing a year-round school schedule. For social distancing, input included protective personal equipment, also references PPE. This input for PPE was inclusive of facial masks being required or mandatory, mandatory on buses and walking to and from class, as well as mandatory for teachers and staff when six-foot social distancing could not be maintained. Input also included facial masks not being mandatory due to obscuring facial reactions, and maybe even being unhealthy or medical risk, and/or even substituting or in addition to facial masks of utilizing face shields. Other input for social distancing included alternative school schedules, meal service plans, bus transportation by limiting number of kids on buses due to school choice or need base, as well as encouraging carpooling among families and neighbors to prevent overcrowding on buses. Also included, all K-5 classes should be self-contained, smaller class sizes, the use of gyms as computer centers, or using large tents, staggered bell times, reduction in class changes, recommendations for plexiglass barriers in lobbies, classrooms, and cafeterias, as well as shorter school days with no lunch or PE to minimize close contact, eliminate fire and active assailant drills, and no contact games at recess or PE, as well as sick children and staff being mandatory to be able to stay at home. We also had a third category for physical facilities, facility changes, where the input included installation of automated equipment, such as touchless doors, auto flush toilets or water closets, as well as additional hand wash stations, and utilizing ultraviolet air disinfection and HEPA filtration systems, as well as establishing a physical space for isolation of students that actually become ill. For health screening, input included the requirement for COVID-19 testing for all OCPS staff, daily temperature checks at bus stops and school entrances, additional staff to support screening and monitoring, and implementation of announcements that remind students of proper hygiene. And then for our fifth category for extra cleaning and sanitizing, input included hand sanitizer should be provided. Students should not be allowed to share supplies or books. The provision, teachers and staff cleaning supplies, and time to clean their own areas, which also included input for increased teacher debit card amount to supplement cleaning supplies, as well as establishing new cleaning measures, where students and teachers can sanitize their own areas and belongings after each use, as well as buses, lunch spaces, PE areas, and equipment to be sanitized after each use. Input also included encouraging more hand washing and allow proper time for it to occur, maybe be the possibility as part of the actual class time itself, and students to wash hands before and after meals. And then also for extra cleaning and sanitizing, input included enhancement of custodial cleaning activities, where restrooms should be cleaned more often, maintain soap stock in restrooms, and additional custodians on staff for actually cleaning of the restrooms. That concludes the Operations Work Group summary.
Thank you, Mr. Winters.
I'm Jim Proizer, Senior Executive Director of Human Resources. I was the lead for the workforce subgroup. The individuals on my team, there were 14 different individuals, and they can all be found on the OCPS website, in conjunction with the different details in total. So there were five main ideas identified and captured from the workforce subgroup and the Think Tank. The first was provide personal protective equipment, which you've heard quite a bit about, for employees and students. Develop disinfection and cleaning protocols for all work locations. Identify an instructional model that allows for both safety and flexibility for our community while meeting the needs of all of our students. Ensure communication is provided in a timely manner, but also from a consistency perspective, and making sure that there's a plan. You know, there was a lot of discussion around that. And lastly, follow the science in order to protect our students, our employees, and the community. Next slide, please. From a face-to-face perspective, again, really, the focus was on the PPE, making sure that it was mandatory, and there were a lot of things that were specified in terms of masks, hand sanitizer, disinfectant, as well as cleaning supplies. And then were applicable protective shields, face shields, and then also goggles may be appropriate depending upon the role or the position of the employee and/or the student. Implement procedures for deep cleaning and adhere to those specific guidelines for the frequency. Observe what other counties in Florida are doing, and mirror that plan where appropriate. So there's obviously been some other discussions around that, and so certainly that was something that came up. And then lastly, an idea was to develop protocols for nurses, including isolation rooms and monitoring of students. I actually had a registered nurse in my group from CTA, so she did give a lot of different ideas and input, and that was one of the main ones she gave. Next slide, please. From a virtual perspective, consider allowing teachers to use the classroom to connect with their students through daily live streaming or video lessons. Recognize that virtual learning may be difficult for some of our students. Ensure every student has a laptop and/or hotspot where necessary. Incorporate workshops for parents on how to set their students up for virtual learning. That came from the Think Tank specifically. And begin fully virtual and then transition to face-to-face.
I would also thank you, Mr. Proizer. I would also add, in case someone has just listened in, it occurred to me, they may think we're actually going through recommendations. That is not the case. Some of these would certainly be a bit expensive, but they were ideas from the Think Tank. No decisions were to be made, nor was it advisement. It was consolidating, staff working to consolidate and summarize lots of ideas that had been presented. Union reps were a part, were assigned by their presidents, or a part of the groups, but it was not collective bargaining either, nor was it sunshine-required meetings. These were staff trying to compile and consolidate ideas that were in large numbers. Want to thank, again, President Wendy Dormel and President Ron Pollard for submitting their reps and for participating as well. Have to reemphasize, this is just a consolidation of the ideas. Don't want anyone to think these are the recommendations. You may hear some similar thoughts as we start working through what is required and expected by the state, but this was not an advisement, simply a consolidation of lots of ideas. With that, we can pause for questions or get to Dr. Vasquez with the instructional programs and summer school.
Okay. We do have, I think we have three board members queued up, five board members queued up, so let's stop here for questions or comments. Let's begin with Member Castor-Dennell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was thinking the same thing that the superintendent was thinking about, people who might be listening to this and thinking that these were recommendations that came from the workgroup. Just because it crosses so many slides and different speakers, I wanted to make sure that that is reiterated as people are tuning in and tuning out. And since this will be posted, this PowerPoint, I wonder if that could be more explicitly stated on our slides for when people are going back to look at this, that these are recommendations, or not recommendations, but ideas that were submitted and that are being considered. That's all. Thank you.
We will include that.
Excellent. Member, I believe I'm right, Member Lopez is next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just having the same comment about the, you know, it's just ideas, so, but I still have some questions in different terminologies, and I think maybe the community can have the same, the same questions. For example, when we talk about the personal protective equipment, are we gonna talk in details about that or not? Maybe examples? Is coming? Oh, perfect. And also, I don't know if we're gonna talk about when we have isolated ill children? Are we going to talk about that? Okay, because I'm just thinking about the privacy, their privacy, and also, if we're gonna have policies to maintain respect and to avoid any type of bullying in terms of this type of situation, because we can have maybe students facing illness during the school time, in the face-to-face school day, and I just thinking about the code of conduct, how are we gonna deal with the, with discipline? Because this is something that we do not expect it. So are we gonna identify any type of policy or any type of document for parents, teachers, and students, just to follow up with discipline inside the classroom and outside the classroom? And the last question is, do we have to think about a sign? Because I was thinking about the presentation from Mr. Pino, and are we gonna assign staff members by groups to guarantee the safety of our students in case we have face-to-face education? Or that is based on the principle, or how it's gonna work? Thank you.
Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Member Lopez, in as succinct as possible, we are trying to consider cohorts, as Dr. Pino was speaking about, easier in some instances than in others, because we have to work on our master scheduling, but as much as possible, we need to keep children in similar or the same groups as much as possible, and have them move together, or have staff come to them, rather than moving them around the campus. So that is certainly a part of our consideration. When it comes to students that are not feeling well, you will see later on, there has to be two different clinics, one for sprained ankles and taking my medicine, and another if I'm exhibiting symptoms of being ill, potentially COVID-19 symptoms. So we do have separation for them. When it comes to the code of conduct, it's pretty broad around the issue of bullying. It can be for any matter. We believe we can accommodate if we discover there is bullying because someone thinks a student has the infection of the virus. We believe our code of conduct will cover that. We will certainly be reviewing all of those documents, but bullying is broad enough, we know in that instance particularly, that we can cover that.
In terms of safety, when we have individualized In terms of safety, when we have individualized cases with our students, maybe SE or other medically ill students, are we looking for an individualized help for those type of students?
I'm not sure I understand your question. So we have to separate those who are actually ill from other children that are coming to the clinic?
Not ill, but medically fragile.
Medically fragile, we'll address that as well. Some of our children that are the most fragile may need to have hospital homebound as their mode of instruction for a period of time until we get past this time that might be dangerous for them, but those are individual decisions that parents have to make regarding their child and their IEP plan. We wouldn't automatically force that, but what the state's document says is have consultation, families need to have consultation with their doctors and determine what might be safest for their child. We certainly want to protect our medically fragile children.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Gordon, you recognized?